Order, meeting of the Oak Ridge Board of Education. If you would please join me and stand as we honor America and I will lead you in the pledge of allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Empire, one nation, under God, in the best of the great times of our lives. And you may be seated. I just want to know whose NCAA bracket is still alive? Is there anybody in here? Yours is?
There's about one.
That's amazing. We'll be sending you to Las Vegas. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. Agel. Please cast your vote. Today is not February the 27th, is it?
No, it's Tuesday.
Okay, bear with me. Okay, let's try this again. Today would be March the 27th. There we go. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move to our special reports and presentations. First will be our good news. Dr. Hartman, you'll start us off, please.
Thank you. I'm reporting for Willowbrook. Two students have their art in the Dogwood Arts Synergy Art Show this year. Third grade student Johnny Baugh and fourth grade student Kyle Cassidy had their work chosen and will be professionally framed. Kudos to these young artists and art teacher Sarah Cochran. On Wednesday, February 15, Willowbrook Elementary held their International STEM Night. The STEM and International Club collaborated to provide Willowbrook families, staff, and community members a night to create and enjoy each other's company and cultures. We had, they had, families come in traditional clothing and bring dishes to share from their countries. The night started with taste testing foods from four continents. Proto Met gave a presentation about their company and how they support community and presented the campus with a plaque that will be proudly displayed in the lobby. Forty-four families explored and learned from staff and community members, uh, community member STEM booths. Six different community member booths and eight staff booths were presented, were represented at over nine different countries. The Lou and the Jim provided opportunities for parents and their children to compete in games. Thank you to our STEM coaches, Michelle Chana, Chino, Chino and Tiffany Collins and International Club sponsors, Bill Mydl and Terry Gonzalez for their hard work.
Thank you. Ms. Webb.
Okay, also from Willowbrook. Willowbrook hosted a Great Arbor Day event on Friday, March the 3rd. A beautiful dogwood tree was planted on the campus near the wetlands in the back of the school. Benjamin Borman, a third grader extraordinaire, read the poem Trees, Trees, Trees for our poem reading skills. A huge thank you to Dave Arnold and Diane Warwick with the State of Tennessee Forestry Department for making the trip to present the City of Oak Ridge a Special Arbor Day proclamation signed by Governor Lee and our Tree, City, and Tree Line Awards. Thanks to the mayor, city manager, and all other special guests, EQAB, school board, and city council for your attendance, words, and exemplary planting skills. Our kindergarten, first and second grade students received literacy-to-go packs from our Friends of Literacy in Oak Ridge. We appreciate our community partners. And that's from Willowbrook.
Ms. McLean.
Okay, I have good news from Glenwood. Congratulations to Liam Bunch. He was our school's spelling bee champion and qualified to compete in the East Tennessee Regional Spelling Bee at the University of Tennessee. His qualification means he is in the top 50 spellers in East Tennessee. Way to be. Valentines were created and given to local residents at the Commonwealth, NHS, and Alexander House Retirement Homes by Glenwood students. And finally, Amy Kennedy was granted a $1,000 Altrusa literacy grant for continued support of the Glenwoods' book vending machine. And that's just some of the good news from Glenwood.
Ms. Agel.
From Robertsville Middle School, Robertsville's math counts team competed in the chapter competition at the University of Tennessee campus on February 25th. After two individual rounds and a team round of competition, Robertsville claimed second place. Two students qualified for the state competition later this month. Each year, eighth graders at Robertsville go through a portfolio review with Mrs. Schrock, an art teacher at Oak Ridge High School, to try and be accepted at the honors art class for ninth grade. Robertsville is proud to have 10 students selected and were accepted into this class. This year, the show will be held at the Oak Ridge Public Library through all of April. And then from Jefferson Middle School, on Wednesday, March 8th, the seventh and eighth grade bands traveled to Maryville College to participate in the ETS BOA Concert Performance Assessment. Our band students represented Jefferson extremely well, both in behavior and performance. The band was awarded an excellent rating in both stage performance and sight reading, which is the second highest honor awarded by the assessment. In addition, our students were able to spend some time walking around the college campus, eating at the campus dining hall, and listening to some of the performances by other groups. The students all had a great time and are excited to go again next year, and that is good news.
We're going to start something new this evening or this afternoon. One of the items that we do discuss, and a very important item that we discuss at each of our board meetings, is our attendance. Obviously, the success of our students and our staff as being in school. So I'm going to help Mr. Lay with a present, two presentations, and he's going to give us the background on this. We'll be making two presentations tonight, and then those who receive tonight's presentation will return the presentation next month, and it will be presented again, possibly to the same people who won it tonight. It could be. And we'll be doing that from now on each month, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. And I appreciate your flexibility, Mr. Philhauer. We actually received the trophies today, so we decided to move forward with this. So we do monitor our students' attendance every month, and we just basically see, try to determine which school is doing the best. Our range for the sixth reporting period basically was from a 5.5 absenteeism rate to an 8.7. So the school with the lowest, which was a 5.5%, and I'll be honest, I predicted it would probably be an elementary school, but it wasn't. Jefferson Middle School, please come get your trophy. A student would guess, silver.
I'll need to carry this around and put my babies in and have photos taken, or?
Yes, it was, it was suggested in the future perhaps you should have M&amp;M's or apples or something in it, so anyway.
Where do you want to get?
Right. Thanks so much. Wasn't very expected, eh?
Uh-huh. Now, just out of curiosity, I thought, okay, if you have a 5.5% absentee, absenteeism rate, and you basically have the students that Jefferson has, that means that on average, 38 students miss school per day. So even though we're happy that you led the district, I like to see that number get lower because that's a lot of instructional time. Now, with that said, I think we could also become a lot better in Oak Ridge schools if we could get better in the area of staff attendance. So roughly what I do is I take your percentage of staff, so for instance, let's just say if Robertsville happens to have 7% of the staff, but they have 10% of the absences district-wide, they're at a negative three. Because they basically had more absences as far as percentages than their staff. But they actually were the opposite this past month. Robertsville Middle School had 7% of the absences, but they have 11% of the staff. So basically, they were a 0.4 on the positive side, and your staff clearly led the district this year, or I'm sorry, the sixth reporting period with great staff attendance. So congratulations to Robertsville Middle School. And feel free to carry those back with you tomorrow during the principal's meetings just to gloat a little bit, all right? Thank you.
And all of that is just some of the good news that are going on in our schools. Actually, to have that good news and having been out now for two weeks, since back in school tomorrow, it's hard to believe that we're about, almost in April, and it won't be long before that last day of school will be occurring, and it will be graduation time at Blankenship Field. So another successful year on its way to being completed, and we hope that the good news and all the successes continue. Speaking of good news, it is that time of the year where budget preparations, which began a long time ago, are now on their way to fruition, and decisions will be made on the budget coming up in the next couple of months. So we're going to be hearing two proposals. First one from OREA, and then the second salary proposal from the principals. So Mike, are you doing, I would assume, OREA, right?
Yep. Come on up. You can just sit there and let me do this. All right. So I brought, I brought some help, but they're just going to cheer me on, so I appreciate that. Board of Education, thank you for having us again for our annual little proposal. We appreciate that. Before I get started, I also wanted to say thank you for everything that you do to support the students, the teachers, the TAs, every staff member that we have, our custodians and our IT department, just everybody, thank you. We couldn't do what we are able to do without your support and the support of everybody in the community, so we appreciate that. Summary of our proposals, our, we're asking for a 5% increase for all eligible employees and a step increase for all of the eligible employees. We're asking that we jump up ahead of the state and put in a $50,000 starting salary at step one for our bachelors. We're not far away from that. That way we can get ahead of the state, maybe. And again, we're asking for an increase to the contribution for insurance for 90% for employees only and 80% for employee and family members. Looking at the cost of living index, it again outpaces salary increases. Nationally, the Consumer Price Index jumped 6% from February 2022 to February 2023, and last, last year, just for the southeast region, it was an additional 1%, it jumped up 7% from last year. Specifically, when you dig into the CPI, consumer food prices have jumped up almost 10% from the year. So, and again, if we look at just the southeast, it's over 10%, almost 11%. So these are real costs that our employees are feeling. And we, we got a really generous increase last year, but it wasn't, it still didn't meet CPI from last year, so we continue to be a little bit behind the eight ball. For, as an example, Social Security and government programs provided an 8.7% COLA for 2023 to help meet that. And those should be live links in there when you, if you'd like to look at where I got So, I'll go back to that real quick. A 5% increase will definitely help us to close that gap. It's not going to, it's not going to hit everything well, but we definitely help close that gap between what this cost of living is and what we're actually bringing home. I got new salary data for 2023. We're sliding down the salary schedules compared to the next, the rest of the state ever so slightly. We've always prided ourselves on being one of the best paying districts in, in the state of Tennessee, definitely the best paying in East Tennessee. If you look at this, we rank fourth on the full salary schedule. Our average for the whole salary schedule is 67, 821. That's only $11,068 more than Maryville and only 1278 more than Alcoa. And I found this surprising, we're only $2,600 more than Sevier County. So when we look in individual things, break it down a little bit, we're eighth on the bachelor's salary, sixteenth on bachelor's minimum, and seventh on bachelor's maximum. Alcoa already hasn't put, put in the $50,000 bachelor's minimum as a start salary. They've already jumped up and beat what the state is proposing. When we look at our master's degree, we're still much better at that, although we're not number one in anymore. Third in master's average, less than $500 more than Maryville, and less than $800 more than Alcoa. We're second for master's minimum by substantial $2,000 plus difference, and second in master's max by a little over $1,200, and that's with Franklin Special School District. So we're doing a little, a little bit better in our rankings on the master's degree, but bachelor's is still, is continuing to slide down a little bit. So if we can get up to that $50,000 step one for bachelor's, that'll help, and then make the adjustments as well for the rest of it, that'll help bump everything up a little bit more. And my conversations with Dr. Borchers, that didn't seem to be a huge cost, so hopefully it's something we can get done. Insurance costs and not only the cost for the premium, but the cost for deductibles and coinsurance are skyrocketing. They are outpacing our salary increases. So in looking at the data, insurance premiums rose from between $26 and $150 per month, depending on your plan, from the 2022 rates. And on top of that was an $8 to 88 increase per month from 2021. So we're looking at some pretty substantial increases per month over the last two years. As an example, I looked at some specific things that I thought applied to a good number of people in the district. But if you look at the standard PPO for both Blue Cross Blue Shield and Cigna for employee and spouses and children, that increased from almost $5,700 to almost $6,000. So a $237 or 4.17% difference in increase. The employee contribution, what we pay over 20 periods, went up $23.76 every month. And that's just for their premium costs. When we look at the things for deductibles, the coinsurance, out-of-pocket maximums, emergency rooms, all of those have gone up as well. And if you have, you know, kids, like I had, they're, they're older now, so I don't have to pay for as much, but, you know, we were in the emergency room every now and then because they played sports. But, you know, they're just kids. That's a, that's a pretty substantial co-pay we have there. So based on the actual 4% raise that we, that we got last year, when we actually look at the cost with insurance, we lost over a half percent raise. So again, looking at some average data here, from a master's average for, for this school year is at 65, 891. Last year was 63, 357. The difference between that is $2,500 plus. So over 10 months, because that's what we pay in insurance, it's $253.40 a month raise with the premium increase, the actual raise was down to 200 and, under $230. So that $237.60 less per year, that didn't, that got taken out of that 4% raise. If you look at the bachelor's average, again, it's, the difference was 2,000, almost $2,200. So almost $220 over 10 months, take out the premium increase, and we're down to $196 actually of what our employees were able to take home. And I'm sure that if we look down the pay scale, it's going to be even more dramatic. I just didn't have all of that data in front of each other, but when we look at what our custodians have to play, pay, and some of the IT people, that's going to cut even, the, the difference is going to be more pronounced, I think. So we're asking you to pay a little bit more for insurance premiums. So the board total monthly, or the total monthly premium, again, we're still going on that employee and spouse with two children, or with children, just as a baseline example. That premium was 1649 monthly BOE contribution. At 80%, which we're, what we're asking for is, would be 1319 a month, which, at 70%, which is what you're currently paying, it's 1154. That's $164.90 difference, and that will reduce the employee contribution every month to 300 and, under $330, and down from almost 500 a month. So this will definitely put money, at least almost $100 back in employees' pockets every month, which will be very helpful. Any questions? There was a lot, a lot of numbers.
Can you send this presentation to each of us?
Yeah, I can, I'd be happy to do that.
Would you do that?
Yes. I would be happy to do that. I, I was under the impression that you had that, but I will, I will email it to you.
I don't think we do. No, we don't.
Nope, okay. I didn't know if it got included in the board notes. I'd be happy to send it.
That would be great if you could do that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Questions from anyone? Thank you, and.
I apologize for my poor teaching effect there. I haven't, I've been out of the classroom a little while. Got to get back in the habit of it, so.
You did fine.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate all that you do, and we appreciate the relationship that we have with OREA. It has, since I've been in the Oak Ridge Schools District, has always been a very positive and open-ended relationship, and that we're very fortunate for that. That's not always true.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that. You know, I do a lot of work with Tennessee Education Association and the National Education Association, and I hear horror stories about how the boards and superintendent are, are in conflict, the boards and teachers are in conflict, and what we have here is really special. And, you know, there's always room for improvement, and, but we're always open to making those improvements and, and having good conversations to make sure that, that we continue to exemplify what public education is. So again, as I began, I appreciate everything that you do for us, the time that you take to serve on this board, the time that you take to come visit the schools and ask us questions and have conversations. That doesn't happen in a lot of places, and thank you. Thank you for all that you do. All right.
Thank you.
Principals, you're up.
Myself and Ms. Jim Lorndine were tasked to come up with this, the principal's salary proposal. We do not have a presentation, but we usually just do a simple statement. First of all, we'd like to begin by thanking Dr. Borchers, our executive team leaders, and our school board for the many ways you support our teachers, our administrators, and our students. The growth that we're making in many areas in our district can clearly be seen and witnessed, and we appreciate that about our district. Our principal group would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak on the salary proposal. And after a lot of research, we are still in the top three to five as far as administrators paid in the state. We very much appreciate that. What we are asking for, after talking to many of our colleagues, is a base 4% increase in pay in any applicable step raise. We feel this is reflective of the current economic environment and is sustainable given our new funding model. We once again appreciate all your leadership and consideration and time to speak this evening.
Just thank you for all you do. We truly appreciate your support. And does anybody have any questions?
Well, those are going to come a lot on down the road a little bit, but we, we will, but thank you. We appreciate it again. Appreciate all that you all do for our students and our school district. We are very fortunate in this district to have what we have, and as was said, there is always room for improvement, and as long as we realize that and keep moving in that direction, we'll continue to get better at the things we're doing. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the board members at this point in time? Okay, moving on. Next is the public forum. Public forum is for anyone who would like to address a topic that is not on the agenda. You may address a topic that is on the agenda when it is presented. Please raise your hand to be recognized. If you choose to address the board, you will have three minutes to speak. The board may or may not respond to your comments, or may have the superintendent address your concerns. When you speak, please come to the podium and sign in, and then state your name and address for the board. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board at this time? Seeing no one, we will move on to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Dr. Hartman. Please cast your vote. Consent agenda is approved unanimously. Next item, the first item under items for action is the selection of the Oak Ridge Schools' Volunteer of the Year. We did the process a little bit different this year. We asked each school to submit to us a person that they feel like represents the volunteer of the year in their school. We appreciate those who submitted individuals. You have made it very tough on us making selections, and as always, and as you well know in your school, we have volunteers who go above and beyond helping our schools do things that wouldn't happen if we didn't have those volunteers. Our nominees this year are Christine Mounts from Linden. Our nominees this year are Christine Mounts from Linden, Bill Walls from Willowbrook, Holly Rodamel.
Rodamel.
Rodamel. I knew I would miss that. Thank you. Rodamel from Glenwood, Wes Hicks from Woodland, Brenda Miller from Robertsville, and Becky Hughes from Oak Ridge High School. The board, in a moment or two, will make a selection. Our selection then will be sent on to Tennessee School Board Association with hopes that that person will become the East District Volunteer of the Year, and then with hopes that that person will move on and become the state winner in November at our Leadership Conference and Convention. Board members, you should find in front of you a slip of paper that is for you to write your vote on. On the first vote, if there are individuals who receive no votes, then they would be eliminated for future voting. There is the possibility there could be a clear-cut winner on the first ballot with the majority of votes. So, if not, then we'll vote on the second ballot. Any questions or comments? Ms. McLean.
My comment is, this is really hard. In past years, there've been, like, I thought, clear people, but this year, there's some really good people that are making good things happen in our schools. And so, I wish we could nominate everybody, but anyway, thanks.
Dr. Borchers, I want to have these passed down to you, and then if you'd just call out who their votes are, and then I'll record them here. And then whomever this person is, they will be invited to our next board meeting, and we will recognize them at that time.
We've got two for Bill Walls, one for Brenda Miller, one for Christine Mounts, and one for Ms... Help me.
Hughes.
Hughes, excuse me.
Okay, so, we don't have a clear cut, but Holly from Glenwood and Wes from Woodland, because they did not receive a vote, would be eliminated. So, on the next round, you have Christine from Linden, Bill from Willowbrook, Brenda from Robertsville, and Becky from Oak Ridge High School. So, please do that now. You know, I used to watch the city council meetings when they were voting on people for the committees they have and the different things, and I'd always say, "Isn't there a better way of doing that?" Obviously, there's not.
Is that the same one again? So, we've got two for Christine Mounts, Bill Walls, two for Bill Walls, one for Brenda Miller.
Okay, so, that would eliminate Becky Hughes of Oak Ridge High School. So, with no clear-cut majority, your vote is Christine from Linden, Bill from Willowbrook, and Brenda from Robertsville. Let's send them back more, do it on the other side.
Somebody help me out with this thing? We've got two for Bill Walls, two for Christine Mounts, and one for Brenda Miller.
Without objection, since Brenda just received one vote, I think she goes out on this next round. Any objection to that? Okay, so, it's down to Christine and Bill. I need those ballots back, or does anybody have it? Are you all out? Okay. So, as Ms. McLean said, this is difficult, obvious, but we have not met these, we don't, we may or may not know these individuals. But, what has helped us is, from each of the schools, the information that you filled out for us about these individuals has, we couldn't have done it without that, obviously, but just really great information.
We have three for Bill Walls and two for Christine Mounts.
So, Mr. Bill Walls from Willowbrook will be selected as our Volunteer of the Year. Congratulations to him. Ms. Laurine Dean, if you would contact him and let him know that, and I will be calling him as well to set up his coming to our next school board meeting. Will you do that? Thank you. And again, congratulations to all of those who were nominated. They're just, and I'm sure you've got more than the ones you nominated, but we appreciate it, and we'll see where we go from here. So, the motion, I would make the motion to approve Mr. Bill Walls from Willowbrook Elementary School as our Volunteer of the Year.
Second.
Motion seconded by Ms. Agel. And cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on. Item B is the FY23 Board of Education Audit. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY23 Board of Education Audit.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
May for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers?
As the board can see from Ms. Van Dyke's memo, we recommend that the Oak Ridge Schools approve the audit firm of Brown, Jake, and McDaniel PC for performance of the FY23 annual audits.
Comments or questions? Ms. Van Dyke, any comments?
No, this is the same firm that we've used the last few years, and we really, really enjoy them. They provide a great service to us.
And I was going to ask you that. It might have been in there, and I don't remember how many. I knew it had been. This is not their second year. It's more than two.
No, this will be our fifth year with them.
Yeah. Okay. Please, motion on the floor is approval of the audit. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item C is approval of FY24 Oak Log Contract. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY24 Oak Log Contract.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? You did. Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Dr. Hartman. Comments or questions, Dr. Borchers?
As you can see from the memo from the high school, they recommend that the Board of Education accept this bid from Jostens for the annual Oak Ridge yearbook bid. Their bid is $45,000 plus shipping, which was the best price that met specifications.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion is approved unanimously. Next item is, what happened over here? Is the approval of the FY24 non-resident tuition rates. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY24 non-resident tuition rates.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Dr. Hartman. Dr. Borchers?
Ms. Van Dyke put together a nice two-page handout there of what is happening with our world of tuition students. We've really been going up lately, and I thought the board would be interested. When we started this, we had 17 staff members that were part of this process. We now have 41 students of staff members that are part of this process. So, very excited about that. So, it's gone up every year.
That's great. Comments from the board or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item E, FY24 math and CTE textbook adoption recommendations. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY24 CCTE and math textbook adoption recommendations.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers?
I'm going to ask Dr. Williams to share some brief details about this process.
We had a wonderful opportunity with our Esser Relief Funds to pilot a few of these materials. We don't usually get that opportunity, so we got to spend a little more time with some of these materials than we normally do. And as you've seen on our day-to-day, we were also, our day-to-days, we've also been able to take a look at the impact of those materials, instructional materials, too. So, it's been a really positive adoption process. You will notice when you look through here, like everything else, textbooks have been hit by inflation, but I do want to remind you, as you look across, this is a six-year adoption for CTE and math books.
Was the math, was the math adoption behind? It was.
Yes, yes, it's been delayed, yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Item F is the fourth modification of superintendent's contract. I'll just briefly explain what this is and make the motion, if that's okay. You might remember, we modified the superintendent's contract a couple of months ago.
Prior to Christmas, I think it was.
Yeah, yeah, prior to Christmas, somewhere in there. We had, we did some review and some tweaking of his contract. There were four items in that modification that the board approved. Somehow, and Dr. Borchers and I have not figured out yet how, somehow, when it came to us to do the approval, we only approved three of them. We just don't know how that happened. But, so, we got to clear that up, and that's what we're doing tonight. So, I would make the motion to approve the fourth modification of the superintendent's contract, and seconded by Ms. McLean. Any questions or comments from the board? Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to items for information, there's some more good information about enrollment and attendance. Mr. Lay?
Yes, sir. If you compare basically our attendance today at the end of the sixth reporting period, at the end of the year, this past school year, we are still at 91 students. And then if you look at our percentages of absenteeism, like I said, they've gotten better if you go back and, especially if you compare those to the fourth and the fifth reporting period, so. But perhaps the best news of the evening, it just hit us the other week. Have we really looked at our truancy review and support plan to see, is it working? So, basically, we ask our principals to provide us some information, and I've only had the opportunity to look at one school, and I hope the other eight schools are as good as this one school. But what we, the question we asked was, how many students basically were at tier one? Because it's, you know, our plan is a tier-three plan. So, anyway, so it has three tiers. So, we asked basically, how many students make it to tier one, tier two, and tier three? And this is from Willowbrook. They had 130 students who were at tier one, but only 11 of those students made it to tier three, which would be basically where we get legal interaction. So, if you do the math, basically, we were successful in meeting the needs of 84% of our students in improving their attendance. So, so we are in the process of getting that information from every school. I hope that that information we receive is as positive. If it is, then basically, our plan will continue as is, but if not, we will tweak our plan as needed, but that was encouraging, so.
That is encouraging.
Yes.
That is good news.
Yes.
Comments from the board? Next is financial report. We've obviously already approved the audit. Ms. Van Dyke, any comments? Working feverishly to get the budget ready. Any questions from anyone on the board? Okay, items for discussion. We have no old business or new business. Communications, on April the 5th, students and staff at Oak Ridge High School in the math thesis program will be having their presentations from 3:30 to 5:00, if you can make that, on April the 5th. Also, on April the 5th, the board will be meeting with maintenance here in SAB at 8:30. On April the 12th, the board will be holding its second board retreat of the year, beginning at 8:30 here at SAB. On April the 19th, the board will be visiting the new IT department here at SAB at 8:30. And then, on April 24th, the board will be meeting again for its April meeting. And that doesn't mean that's the only things that are going on, but those are some of the highlights of the things that I've been made aware of that are going on. Any comments from the board? Hearing none, we stand adjourned. Hearing none, we stand adjourned.